To order for the panel select board, regular scheduled meeting. It is 7:00 PM on Thursday, February 6th, 2020. On the agenda tonight, our agenda approval, approval of minutes for 113 special meeting, 121 special meeting, 123, 128 special meeting, 129 special meeting, 131 special meeting. Reading of the warrants, or signing of the warrants, public comment, mail, old business, including school bus, field trip coordination, personnel policy, the treasurer delinquent tax collector regarding issues brought up from the 12, 5, 19, and 131, 20 board meetings, forensic audit addendum, new business, Alta Garden Mobile Home Park email discussion, mail route for added email security associated with recent ransomware attack, and executive session for legal delinquent tax collector, and then adjourn. So I'll hear a motion to approve.
Brian, can I ask that I be added for economic development?
Yeah, we have to do that during the discussion process. So I have to do the formality first.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Alright, so is there any discussion? I would like to add a few things.
Who's second?
I did.
Give me a second.
Sorry, I second. So I want to add a few things. I want to remove the treasurer delinquent tax collector, Ellen, discussion. Ellen is unfortunately unable to be here tonight, so remove that, remove the executive session for delinquent tax collector. I would like to add CAT TV contract approval under old business, and then piggybacking on that meeting schedule. Then, under new business, I would like to add on to Alta Garden Mobile Home discussion, also about a letter to the residents of the Mobile Home Park. Let's see, I would like to add, under new business as well, Fire District Number 2 Sewer Connect. And then after that, Economic Development Committee nomination, recommendation, and then I would like to add executive session for personnel.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with changes.
I had, I had an addition.
Okay.
Um, under old business, can we please add a second amendment sanctuary discussion? Thank you.
Hey, what, add that after CAT TV?
Um, that's fine, and can we move economic development nomination up to right after mail so that Shannon doesn't have to stay there the whole night?
Well, I thought she wanted to.
I'll just take two minutes, I promise.
Bob, you had something?
Um, I, um, no, I'm okay.
Okay, so you want to move economic development up to right after mail? Okay, is there any other changes? Okay, I make a motion, we approve the agenda with the new changes, well, there was more changes added.
Yep.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with changes, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so, Bob, how you voting?
Aye.
Okay, I heard Marlena, I didn't hear Bob.
Alright, so, approval of the minutes for 113, 121, 123, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for 113, 121 special, 123, 128 special, 129 special, 131 special?
Second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as stated, is there any discussion?
Um, yeah, I, the only discussion that I have is to make sure that we're being consistent, is when we add comments and stuff, make sure that it's consistent from meeting to meeting. Sometimes people reach out and say, "How come my comments weren't put in? How come some of those comments were put in?" And, and it does seem a little bit subjective, so let's just be consistent.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
They, no, not, not in opposed.
You're an aye, okay.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
So on to the warrants. Alright, so payroll ending 11220 in the amount of $8,295.63, payroll ending 11920 in the amount of $10,167.78, payroll ending 12620 in the amount of $8,372.99, payroll ending 22220 in the amount of $9,219.34, accounts payable 30 for 11720 in the amount of $23,949.6, accounts payable 31, 12420 in the amount of $26,771.57, accounts payable 32 on 13120 in the amount of $13,303.22, accounts payable 33, uh, 2720 in the amount of $23,126.88. Alright, now second, we have a motion and a second to approve the warrants, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Why are you calling me, Ellen?
Uh, I would like to ask the public to sound yourself.
Bob's abstaining, Marlena.
Phone call to.
I'm not saying.
Yep, thank you. Bob and Marlena abstaining on the vote, warrant, the vote.
Okay, alright, warrants are approved. Alright, public comment, before we begin public comment, as stated in our last meeting, we will be instituting the three-minute rule, so I have my little egg timer here, so graciously provided to us by Joyce, so it doesn't appear to make a whole lot of noise, but I will be stopping you at three minutes, if you have a statement you want to read, I would ask you to just submit it to the board, we can do our own reading if it's, but keep it to under three minutes. Is there any public comment? Nope? This is unusual, okay, I'm not complaining. Alright, moving on to, moving on to mail. Okay, so, so, uh, our delinquent tax collector sent us a letter stating that she is requesting a select board member attend the tax sale scheduled for February 27th at 10:00 AM to represent the town of Pownell, do we have a volunteer? Harry says he can do it.
I don't know if I can.
I'll make a motion that we send Harry to be our representative.
I, I can also attend.
Okay.
Alright, well that's two, awesome.
Beautiful.
So a motion that we send Harry and Marlena to be representatives to the tax sale scheduled February 27th at 10:00 AM to represent town of Pownell.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve sending representatives to the tax sale, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dead silence from both of them.
Bob, Marlena, where you voting?
Sorry about that. Well, can I, can I, yeah?
Yep. Yeah, I believe we just lost one. Which phone was that?
This one.
Alright.
Let him call back here.
Hello.
Hello, yeah, sure can vote.
We just lost Bob.
It's not only you.
I wasn't aye.
Okay, thank you.
Very gay.
Alright, if Bob calls in, get him back, we'll get him back, right now we're down to four. Hey!
Yo.
Hello, Domino's.
Bob, sorry about that, it looks like we got disconnected.
We did. Actually, Bob, we hung up on you.
Made some funky noises.
Alright, well you were here for the, to hear for the vote for the last one, so were you a yea or nay on sending representatives?
For the tax.
Uh, aye, I was trying to say aye when we got disconnected.
Okay. Alright, then we received some letters from the public, uh, these were also through email, so everybody got a chance to already read those. Okay, uh, alright, that's it for the mail, so moving on to, uh, economic development.
Thank you.
So kindly introduce yourself to the people over the phone.
Sure, my name is Shannon McLennithen, I serve as the chair of the Economic Development Committee. As some of you may know, we posted three positions to be added to Economic Development Committee a couple months ago, as a result of that, we had one inquiry from a lifelong resident, um, her name's Erin Roy, but you may all know her as Komar, um, she was a Komar from Pownell, um, so she reached out, and if I don't, if I can read this letter of interest, is that okay, or do you want me to just submit it?
No, you can read it, because we got two people on the phone.
Okay.
If you could afterwards, send an email copy to everybody.
Yep, "To the members of the Pownell Economic Development Committee, my name is Erin Komar Roy, and I'm interested in joining your Economic Development Group. As a lifetime resident of Pownell and as someone with young children, I believe Pownell has tremendous potential, and I'm interested in helping Pownell thrive. I've worked for Southwestern Vermont Medical Center as a radiation therapist for 12 years. My husband Ricky and I have two children, four and two, here in Pownell, I look forward to working with all of you." So I'm just bringing this to the board to ask for approval to add her to Economic Development Committee, and she did come to our last, um, committee meeting as well, and just kind of listened in and made sure it's something she wanted to join, so.
We got an opening, and we got an applicant, so.
Make a motion to accept her.
You're approving?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve adding Erin Komar Roy to the Economic Development Committee, is there any discussion?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make a comment, is, um, of course I'm going to go ahead and approve, because it's, it's wonderful that our citizens are stepping up to, uh, to be part of our committees and, and boards and open positions. However, I do think it's, at some point we got to put on the agenda for the select board, and, and invite the Economic Development Committee into that discussion, to really define what the, what the mission of that, of that committee is. I want to make, the, the mission of the committee is be coming from the select board, not from the committee.
Well, I would say probably after the next, next election, when there's a new board, I think that would be good to bring all the commissions and boards, and have a little, little meet and greet, so.
Um, yes.
Alright, so is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Marlena?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations, now there's three of you.
Four.
Four, I'm sorry, four.
Say again?
Is Erin there?
Not here tonight, no.
She's not here tonight, no.
Okay, well, I'll congratulate her on CAT TV then, and thank you for stepping up.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, old business, moving on to school bus field trip coordination, so after some, uh, little bit of back and forth, getting a response, so I will forward this on to the rest of the board momentarily, so, but I'll read it, so from Cindy Brownell, it invited her to come down tonight, "So, hi Brian, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I found someone to schedule the field trips, I called Linda and told her Diane Cummings, the one who is going to drive the bus, is willing to do the job, uh, of coordinating. It makes sense, she is happy to do it, and will make her job easier, so hope the board will accept her, now we can take the kids on trips, they have been very patient with us, thanks again for doing this for our kids, Cindy." So I will forward that to the board momentarily.
And I will make a motion to accept her to do that.
Okay.
Second it.
Alright.
I didn't think we had to, but.
Well, just to make sure what they were, alright, so there's a motion and a second to allow, uh, Diane Cummings to, uh, be the coordinator for the bus trips, so essentially our point of contact with the, all the different schools, so is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just, it's actually just a question, what happened with Julie at Pownell Elementary School, I thought that was who was going to be coordinating, the schedule?
Yeah, from what I've been given to under, from what I've been given to understand, uh, the school district doesn't want to do it, they essentially pawn that off on us.
They don't want to do it for the district.
Yeah, they don't want to do it for the district.
They would do it for Pownell School, but not the district.
So Diane's willing to take on that added responsibility, plus this way she knows exactly there's, yeah, her schedule, so, less, less game of telephone. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. I, I'm an aye in favor.
Alright, I think Bob was an aye.
Yep.
That's correct.
Alright, so, all opposed? Okay, what we got? So personnel policy.
Did everybody look at the personnel policy that was emailed today?
No.
No, you didn't? It's the same one that we keep going back and forth about, and I would just like to make a motion to get this moving forward, um, I think one of the conversations that we had with Marlena when she was questioning the overtime, I think we clarified that, so let's just get this done. With the overtime, remember she had the question, then we talked about it?
Yeah.
It wasn't the overtime Elizabeth, it was the sick time.
Or sick time? No, it was the overtime.
It was, it was.
No, it was the sick time, it was, there was a request, on the last one that they sent, there was a request to add additional sick days.
No, there wasn't.
The full detail was taken out.
No, there wasn't, you, we went back and forth for the overtime, um, anything over 40 hours, in that they were getting paid a holiday, um.
No, it was the sick time.
No, it wasn't, but, okay.
I got the email, it was the sick time.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel policy that.
I'll second.
Discussed in, it's like beating a dead horse.
This is the one that we went over and did.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
And this is the one that all the employees?
Um, yes, I'd like to point out that the provisions were removed related to time cards for elected officials, the signed agreements for elected officials who are participating in healthcare, and that the elected official time card, um, requirement, and was removed from the retirement section as well, and that the, um, stipulation that elected positions may not be combined, um, was also removed. I haven't had a chance to read through this policy and compare it to the one that was approved in July, so I don't know what else may have been removed or changed.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if it was the same one that we already approved.
No, this, this is not the one that we approved, Jamie.
This is the one that came back and we have the conversation about.
You have to compare the two side by side and read through each section.
Right, that's what I was trying to remember.
In addition, there's information related to the wastewater treatment facility, and it's my understanding that they have a different contract, so it really doesn't apply, because they have a separate contract that specifically specifies how their overtime is approved, so it doesn't make sense to put it in this policy when they have a separate one.
Not everybody that works for wastewater has a separate contract, though.
Well, it wouldn't apply to the part-time employee, but it, it applies to the full-time employees, and it's very specific, so.
And to get back to your retirement, we have a statement from VEMR's in there, it's, it's, okay, I don't know why this didn't come up before when we were talking about the same policy.
Okay, so.
Oh, I just didn't know it was the same one we worked on before.
It's the same one that the employees all came to the table and sat down with Auditor Dave Adams, and said historically, this policy matches what was, and the argument was over.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor of approving the personnel policy is stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Bob.
Aye, sorry, I wait for everybody else to say aye.
Oh, sorry, you, you can jump right in and say whatever you want. Alright, so all opposed?
I'm abstaining, um, and I will, that's all, sorry.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna take time to read it, and then we may have to revisit it, no.
Should we, can we sign it now? Sign your signature page.
Yes, that way we have something to work off of, that's why I'm willing to do this.
But was this even vetted through the department, um, from, from VLCT? I mean, that was something that we always stated, we, we wouldn't approve anything unless the VLCT blessed it, and I didn't see anything that y'all sent stating that the VLCT reviewed it. Another thing I just noticed, it references current, uh, current wage, and that's the inappropriate term for VLCT, because you theoretically could look back at someone's employment record and appoint that as their rate, and it might be the wrong rate, it might be a lesser amount.
Okay, thank you.
So I would say if anybody's got any list of changes they want to make, we can bring it up at the next meeting, but for now, this, this was passed on a vote of four to one. So, personnel policy, so pass that down to Linda, please.
Any other piece, though?
And, uh, forensic audit addendum, so as we had stated in a previous meeting, Graham and Graham had come back before us asking for additional money to continue on, uh, they stated the reasons why, um, all they had found was basically procedural errors in communication, which they had already said that they will be giving us a statement whether we continue on with them or not, and they'll give us recommendations on how to proceed. So, uh, I would like to make a motion, we, uh, we just simply close out, we close out the forensic audit, because we've spent enough taxpayer's money.
And get a report from them.
Yeah, we get the final report.
Second it.
Alright, so we.
Just, just to be clear, what we mean by that is have him complete the current contract without extending it.
Correct.
Yeah, he'll gen, yeah, he'll generate the final report, based off what he has.
And just make sure that the taxpayers know that absolutely nothing will be concluded on the previous open case with the Vermont State Police, so with that being said, we should just, um, contact the Vermont State Police and close that out.
That's not our decision to close out one of their active cases, that's not our decision.
Well, then we should at least notice, well, Jamie, what do you do, you notify them and say we're not going to do a forensic audit, so.
We can notify them once we have the final, and I can give them a copy of it to add to their case file, so.
That's right, they, they get a copy of whatever we get as a final forensic audit.
And if they feel, if they see something different, then they can take and come to us and state, you know, we need to look at this, but it doesn't sound like that's the
Okay, so.
Diane, did you ever find out from, um, the claims person of a passive, whether or not we can submit the detailed itemization of all the checks that were collected that were uncashable, so whether or not we can recoup the monies on that, that we lost as a town?
Restate, please.
I, I did not hear that, uh, that we, that we have proven that we've lost any money as a town, we won't know that until we have the, until we have the final forensic report.
So the initial.
Bob, you, you totally missed the point, this had to do with the previous open Vermont State Police case, with the previous town clerk, and the uncashed checks that were found, that Julie had been itemizing and, and keeping copies of, and we were supposed to find out from our insurance carrier, if we were able to submit the detail, in order to find out if we can submit an insurance claim, to recoup any of that money that we lost, we still had to pay the town, but we, sorry, we still had to pay the state, but we could not deposit those checks, so the town lost all the money we would have gotten from those fees.
No, that's incorrect.
You're making a misstatement, Marlene.
First of all, you, you answer her question as far as what the insurance company says, please, and then I'm gonna.
Seeing as the town already, the town didn't pay those fees to the state that came out of the town clerk's fees.
Correct.
So the town didn't actually lose any money on that, the town clerk already paid that back essentially from the fees that would have been collected, while the assistant town clerk was getting paid an hourly stipend and doing the job, the fees were still accumulating in the account for the town clerk, so the, the funds were paid to the state out of that, the remaining balance was then paid to the town clerk.
Correct.
So the town didn't actually lose any money on that.
Right, and this, the last select board had, the state sent down what was a number that was owed, and the last select board approved and, that the treasurer, um, went from the clerk's account and paid the said amount of money that the state stated it was owed, from that account, so the town squared as far as that goes.
So that's what we have to report. So based on that.
The answer is no. The town was not, didn't actually lose any money.
Okay, so, there was a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Bob mumbled.
Aye.
Was that an aye, Marlena, or?
Aye.
Thank you.
So Linda, or I'm sorry, Liz, I believe you are our point of contact with the forensic auditor, reach out to them and request the final report from him, please. Okay, so, uh, CAT TV contract, so we kind of gone, went back forth a little bit on this. So, we now have the original contract from CAT TV, with the original stated amount of 24 meetings for the panel select board, 12 meetings for the planning commission, uh, same dollar amount as what was originally stated, annual fee coverage is six, $6,150, 4,200 of which is for the panel select board meetings, $1,950 of which is for the planning commission meetings, uh, for the select board meetings, that is three and a half hours per meeting, one and a half hour average meeting, two hours setup, breakdown, processing. If they go beyond that, it's $50 an hour, for the planning commissions, 12 meetings, it is 3.25 hours per meeting, 1.25 hour average meeting, two hours setup, breakdown, processing, and an additional cost of $50 per hour. CAT TV will charge the hourly rate of $50 for all additional meetings beyond the 24 select board and 12 planning commission meetings. CAT TV's coverage includes gavel-to-gavel live coverage of the select board on three viewing platforms, CAT TV Channel 17, CAT TV website, CAT TV Facebook page, take the coverage of the planning commission, CAT TV will also provide scheduled replays on CAT TV Channel 17, on their website, CAT TV Facebook posts, and archival on CAT TV's YouTube channel. So, the town is responsible for providing CAT TV with adequate advance notice of change in the date, time, or location of meetings, CAT TV will not be responsible for coverage of meetings for which the date, time, and/or locations have changed without confirmation with CAT TV. I know everybody already saw the contract, I read it out for the viewers at home, and for the banner, so that they have the information. So, I make a motion that we approve the contract as originally stated.
So moved.
So there's a motion and a second to approve signing the CAT TV contract, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 I'm signing it right now. Okay, so, in addition to that, pass that down to Linda, please, in addition to that, I wanted to add, uh, I would like to, uh, have a brief discussion about our meeting schedule, uh, I think we should go back to the original meeting schedule, and if we need to hold extra meetings, we can ha, have special meetings as we were doing, but our goal should be to get away from those and try to get business done during the meetings.
Yes.
Diane, can you please, um, meeting, which meeting schedule?
Where we meet.
Every other week or the week?
Yeah, every other week, where we meet on the second, Thursday of the month, and then.
Okay, thank you.
And, and then the wastewater treatment one.
Yeah, and the wastewater treatment meeting, which we should start going down there more often, usually we end up canceling.
Just because it's confusing with the paper and with the CAT TV.
So is it going to be?
I second that.
Go ahead, Linda.
Clarify, um, is it going to be the, what, what are the, is it going to be the first and the?
Well.
You've got four, you've got four weeks to your month, what, which ones, which weeks?
It would have been the first and the, first and third Thursday, then?
I thought it was the second and third, I'm sorry, the second and fourth, wasn't it?
It was the second and fourth with.
That's what I thought too, that's what I was going to go back to.
What was the original meeting schedule?
It was second and fourth with CAT, uh, with the treatment plant as needed.
Okay.
We would swap out one of the select board meetings.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good to me, and if we need to meet the sewer, for the sewer, we can swap it out, or we can do a special meeting. Alright, so I, I heard somebody make a motion, or did I imagine that?
I, I so moved it, she seconded it.
I seconded that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve.
Elizabeth and Marlena, is that who I got for motion and second?
No.
Harry, Harry and Marlena.
Harry and Mar, okay.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on meeting All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we're back to the original schedule. Okay, so, uh, Marlena wanted to add second amendment discussion.
Yeah, um, I just want to say thank you to everybody in the community who's reached out to the select board, and, you know, just let us hear your voice, that's important, and because of that, do we want to consider, consider rescinding the vote, so that the community feels more part of decisions like this?
I don't want to.
I don't believe so, I believe, I appreciate all comments for and against. I don't believe so, I believe, I appreciate all co- comments for and against, and as of right now, I still represent the majority of, and my, that have reached out to me as for versus the seven against personally, to include the emails through the town that we've all received. Bless you.
I feel, uh, I feel confident in my vote, and I, 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 I would, if it, uh, if it gets a motion in the second, I would still vote the same.
So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not changing. We made it clear during the meeting, it was a non-binding resolution, it's symbolic, it just sends the message to the state. It's not giving license to people to go and break current federal or state law.
Nope.
So.
But there's a lot of bills on the table up there, so people are gonna wanna reach out to Sergeant and Arms Desk.
Yep.
I will tell you that and contact your representatives. If you're not paying attention, then I don't know what to tell you.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so, there's no more discussion on that? Okay, moving on to, uh, Alta Garden Mobile Home Park email discussion. So, uh, last week I was contacted by the owner of the mobile home parks, Alta Garden Mobile Home Park, uh, forgive me, I'll probably butchered, butcher his name, I believe his name was Mark Garrett?
Garrity, Garrity.
Yeah, I told you I butchered his name. I think in a couple of my emails, I actually just wrote Garrett instead of Garrity, that's why I kept, I'm stuck on that. I realized it after the, the initial one. Um, so, there was some concern after an email was put online from the emails that were released during a FOIA that Mr. Walker had sent to me with, I don't have it pulled up, but to paraphrase, uh, essentially there was talk of a hundred million dollar deal with the racetrack owners and a development plan, and Michael had stated in the email that it was his idea to maybe, they wanted to buy the trailer park, well, I'm here to say that I contacted our planning commission chairman, our development review board chairman, and our zoning administrator, Mr. Gardner, uh, none of that is true, that's not gonna happen, nobody's buying the trailer park, even if the owner of the trailer park wished to sell the park, by state law, he has to give forty-five days notice to all the residents of the park, to give residents ample time to try to come together, find, find somebody that'll help, help them buy the park, or form their own group, and that's before he can even begin any discussions on selling the park. He reached out to me and told me that nobody has ever contacted him on this, there's no discussion, he has no intention on selling the park, he wants people to realize that, nothing's changing. Please pay your rent. So, uh, Mr. Gardner, our zoning administrator, came to say something about this as well, if he still wants to.
Yeah, for sure, Brian, thank you, um, it's Mike Gardner, the zoning administrator. As I stated, you know, response on, on social media and in an email to you, uh, Mr. Walker did approach me, um, right after I became zoning administrator in August, about a big potential project at the racetrack, and, um, he approached me the second time when we were, um, looking at a zoning violation and a health code violation, a potential zoning and health code violation. Absolutely not one time was, uh, was Alta Gardens ever mentioned from Mr. Walker to me, and to be perfectly honest, as Fred read, I treated this potential project at the racetrack like the other two hundred and fifty projects that have gone on since it's closed.
Yeah.
Until, until I have a piece of paper in my hand as the zoning administrator that says, this is what we're looking to do, it's, it's a rumor.
Yep, exactly.
It's just a rumor to me, so.
And I had expressed in my response to Mr. Walker at that time, that if there were any meetings, I would be more than happy to attend, that I would rearrange my work schedule and go.
Right, so.
Nothing ever came of it, so to me, like you just said, it was another pipe dream.
That's right, you know, and absolutely never one time was, was either trailer park for that matter, or any other piece of property in the area mentioned.
Yeah.
You know, absolutely nothing, just this potential big project at the racetrack.
Yeah, and in the email, Mr. Walker did say that was his idea, so, it never went anywhere. So anyway, so the owner of the trailer park, uh, is requesting that we send, uh, letters to all the residents of his park.
Yep.
To tell them that this is not true, that there's nothing to worry about, so, um, he forwarded a list on to Linda of all the addresses to everybody, so I would like to make a motion that we approve Linda to send out correspondence to all the residents of the Mobile Home Park, telling them what we just discussed, that there's no truth to it.
Second that.
So, there's a motion and a second to approve sending correspondence to all the residents of the Alta Garden Mobile Home Park? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just wanna time in a little bit, um, uh, just to be clear, there were, there were emails going back and forth about that property, and not once in any of, going all the way back to May, and there's one and only one that even mentions the park, and that's the one that we cannot validate, right? So this goes all the way back to May, and, um, just to make sure everybody knows, um, uh, it, it wasn't that it just came up in September, it's that the, the park was not even part of this.
Yeah.
Uh, it flew out one email and it does appear just to be, uh, just to be a rumor or a pipe dream.
Alright, so any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Okay. Alright, so on to mail route. So, I believe the entire board is aware that we suffered a ransomware attack, shut down our computers for a little bit of time, thankfully it was caught early enough to where there was no significant damage done, but our tech person, Chuck, is recommending that we add additional, uh, inbound and outbound email security against spam viruses and downtime. So, he sent a couple of things, so, were electronic copies of this emailed out, do you know?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so, if everybody's had a chance to review it, so one of them is for a contract term of twelve months. Let me find the date on it, one of them, uh, let's see, uh, valid if signed by February twenty-first, twenty-twenty, that's for twelve months, the other one is for twenty-four months. So, basically we have our choice of this.
Did we save any money if it went longer?
That's what I was just checking. Monthly total, one fourteen seventy-five. Yeah, it looks like it's the same dollar amount, so.
Did you, basically they're asking you, we're asking, either you start now or you wait until your new budget? And considering what happened?
Yeah, considering what happened, I think we should start now.
Yeah, we need to protect ourselves.
Alright.
Can I ask a good question?
Yes.
Do we do training for staff so they know, cause this was kinda like one line of defense, but do, do we go through training about how to, how to detect something that's fraudulent or, um, you know, cause it's so easy to, you know, UPS is trying to deliver you a package, you click on a link and then you.
Yeah, we've all had cyber courses.
Shannon, the VLCT has something called VLCT University, it's an online program that any municipal participant can participate in, and they offer these types of things for free, um, through the online modules. I highly recommend everybody should do them.
Okay, alright, so I would like to make a motion that we approve, uh, signing up for this immediately.
I will second that.
Alright, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm aye.
Aye.
Okay. So you just need one signature on this, Linda?
Yes.
I assume you only need the one sign?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Fire District Number Two, so, uh, I believe all, the entire board has been looped in on this, the discussion with, uh, Darcy and the Fire District Number Two wishing to be hooked up to our sewer treatment plant, and they need permission for Act Two-Fifty? Everybody up to date on the whole email chain?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, I would like to make a motion that we authorize Otter Creek to seek an amendment to current Act Two-Fifty sewer service area in the town of Pownell to include Fire District Number Two with the provision that the request be prepared and paid for by Otter Creek Fire District Number Two, and that the request be submitted to the town administrative office, the sewer department, and the town's engineering firm for review prior to their submission to the state for approval.
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second? Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
All opposed.
There. They have their official approval. They don't have to wait for us. Okay. So, I believe that is it for that, so I would like to make a motion we enter into executive session for personnel.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter into executive session for personnel, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay.